New bridge and I'll get started, I'll call on city engineer Brian Yvaro. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, your honor, and good afternoon, members. Back in 2016, MINDOT notified Ottertail County and the city that the Union Avenue Bridge, Bridge number 5453 over the Ottertail Valley Railroad, required to be reposted at a lower weight reduction. As we know, and we're all aware, that this bridge serves a major function for the city and our community. Over a year ago, we began this process with Interstate Engineering to determine a strategy to address this bridge. It became evident due to the historic nature, the potential funding sources, and the requirements and the general complexity of the process, that the city should seek services from a consultant with specific experience in this particular field. Because of this, I solicited information from MINDOT's Bridge Division and fellow peers. Olson and Nezold Engineering was highly recommended in this specific field. I reached out to Mr. Steve Olson, who's here present right now, to discuss this process. Steve is here to make a presentation about the background and answer questions about this bridge and the history behind it. Currently, right now, I'm working on a proposal from them. I plan on presenting this, hopefully, to the next committee as a whole, to actually officially start this process. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Steve Olson.
Good afternoon, Steve.
Good afternoon. Thank you for inviting me here. I'm an overeducated semi-farm boy who's got some soybeans that still need to get out here this fall. It's been a challenge. Anyway, so I've got a few bullet points I'd like to step through here to sort of start our conversation. Give you a little bit of background about our company, talk about your bridge, its characteristics, its historic status and significance, and some load capacity issues that Brian talked about. Talked a little bit about some different funding opportunities with such a bridge, conventional transportation dollars that MINDOT navigates for locals, and some other funding opportunities with the Minnesota Historical Society. And then basically give you a little brief overview of our approach to preliminary engineering for this particular bridge. So here's our crews. Ten and a half years ago, I was working in our basement on a card table on top of a foosball table. And ten years later, we've got a pretty solid group of people here. And so, 250 years of combined experience between our group here. So in the back row, we've got a couple technicians, Dan and Dan, and then the silver-haired guy is Arlen Ottman. He worked for the MINDOT Bridge Office for 50 years. He converted the Stone Arch Bridge from a railroad bridge to a pedestrian bridge. Kevin Nelson was the City Bridge Engineer for St. Paul. And we've got a few other salty dogs in the front row there, if you will. So our first project was to move an 1873 Iron Trust Bridge. So this bridge started out in Sauk Center. It got moved up to Koochichin County back in the 1930s. It was on Truck Highway 65. And so the logging trucks would go across this guy, and they called it the Load Leveller. So it would level off the trucks for the loggers up there. MINDOT District got pretty good at repairing parts of the bridge because it did get hit quite a bit. So it needed to find a new home, and so we had it taken apart and re-put together on the Gateway Trail near Stillwater. So it started out carrying horse and buggies, and it's back to carrying horse traffic on the Gateway Trail. The bridge below it is a bridge in Fairland Park in St. Paul, and so it's an old concrete bridge with stone masonry. And we gave it a concrete liner and a new stone facade to dress it up, and we won some awards with St. Paul on that. A little more closer to your type of bridge here is the Midtown Greenway. So this is South Minneapolis, 1914 or so. The railroad's running across South Minneapolis, and the neighbors are all upset that the railroad's separating the community. And so they said, "We don't want this railroad at grade. We want to either raise it up or put it in a trench." So it went all the way to the Supreme Court, and after people got done fighting, the railroad got put down in a trench. And so there were 37 bridges built across this trench. And so 1914 to 1916, I still haven't figured out how they did that 1915 photograph that looks like it was photoshopped, because those bridges are about, you know, a block or two apart, and they look really close in this picture here. So it had some deterioration in the abutments. And you can see in the left picture, the railing looks pretty rough up on top. And over on the right side, we see some of the beams for the bridge, and they're pretty tired as well. And so what we did is we came up with the idea of basically building a bridge inside the bridge. So we wanted to keep the historians happy, because this is in a historic district as well. And so one of the first things we did is we laser-scanned the bridge. And so what this is, is basically automated surveying equipment that can grab about 50,000 points per second, and we can collect all the geometric for the bridge. A lot of these older bridges don't have good plans, and those that do have had things changed in the last 50 or 60 years. And so it's a good way to get geometric information on the bridge. And so once we had really good geometric information, we could specify what kind of concrete pieces would fit in between those beams, and we built that bridge inside a bridge and used these concrete panels. And so what we did is we made sure the foundations could carry current loads. We made sure the piers could carry current loads, and then we could just supplement to the bridge to make it work. And so this is what it looks like after it was all rehabbed. The historians were happy. We didn't mess up the trench that they were all concerned about, and it looked pretty much like it did before. So Brian asked me to talk a little bit about our relationships with MINDOT, and we've got quite a few of them. We are pre-qualified in all four categories that MINDOT has for bridges, from studies to simple bridges to moderate bridges to complex bridges. So we're pre-qualified in all categories. I was the bridge engineer that helped put together their bridge design manual 15, 16 years ago. And so the reason why that's important is I understand why MINDOT has certain rules in their guidance, and why it makes sense to sort of bend those rules a little bit. When you're working with historic bridges, you seem to need to bend the rules a little bit here and there for things that make common sense. With respect to the state aid bridge office, the office that helps with cities and counties with their bridges, we get asked to do peer reviews. So if there's an unusual bridge, Granite Falls had a little suspension bridge. We did some review work for them. Rochester had some new techniques coming from Oregon that we worked on as well. And I've been an instructor for MINDOT's Historic Bridge Training for many years. In addition, on the historic side, we also have pretty good relationships with the Historical Society. I was the first engineer to serve on the State Review Board. And so they don't know how to deal with engineers so much. They're much more comfortable with historians. But they knew there was a lot of bridges coming through to be put on the National Register, and so they wanted an engineer on the review board, and so I got asked, and I stepped forward. Fergus Falls is a certified local government community with the Historical Society, and that means because you have an HPC, you are eligible for certain grants, CLG grants, that not every community in the state is eligible for. And so I'm on the Eden Prairie Heritage Preservation Commission, and they're a CLG community as well, so I know that funding source a little bit. And we are listed in the Historical Society's Preservation Specialist Directory as well. All that's well and good, but let's talk about your bridge. So if you were going to drive down the middle of the bridge and cut a slice through it, this is what your bridge would look like if you looked towards the west. And so the south end is where you see that one in a circle. That's the south abutment or the south bent. Then you've got five spans with the middle span over the railroad track. And then your north abutment is where you see the six in a circle. And so it's a five-span bridge. And so the way it works is you've got basically a concrete slab or decked up on top, and the truck loads get distributed to the piers, and then those go down into the foundations, into that piling. So there's two kinds of piling on your bridge. There's timber piling under circles one, two, five, and six. And near the railroad, there's steel piling, supporting the taller piers. And so if you were a drone and you wanted to look down at your bridge, you would see that fun curve off to the northeast. And so typically, bridge engineers, we like things nice and straight and simple. And you've got a couple wrinkles here in your bridge. You've got a nice flare off to the northeast, which complicates geometry a little bit. And instead of the bridge being perpendicular to the railroad tracks, you're skewed a little bit. So that complicates the geometry a little bit as well. So in 2013, 2014 or so, MINDOT commissioned a bunch of bridge reports on the historic bridges around the state. And so they did about 150 of these, if you will. So basically paired a historian with an engineer to go around and pick another report that talked about what's important from a historic perspective on this bridge, and what kind of deficiencies there might be with respect to engineering of the bridge. And they put together this report. And it basically says your bridge is eligible for the National Register all by itself as a design structure. It's also eligible because it contributes to a couple historic districts or bigger properties, if you will, multiple resource properties, railroads, and then the Vincent Extension here. So from a historic perspective, what the historians want to try to capture is what elements, if you lost, would make your bridge no longer have its historic character, if you will. And so for your bridge, they were really interested in making sure the railing was retained. The railing really sort of defines that bridge to a certain extent. And they wanted to make sure you didn't change span arrangement, the setting, things like that, that are much harder to change. Then, as Brian mentioned, the infamous load issue came around. And so your bridge was built in 1938, a long time ago, and trucks were much smaller in 1938 than they are today. And so the 16-ton, 24-ton, 24-ton are safe vehicle sizes to cross the bridge. As an engineer, we have to have a safety factor of at least 1.3 on things that are published like that. So there isn't a lot of reserve for those vehicles. And we talked to, I think you might have provided us with the information on the fire truck here, that the biggest fire truck in your arsenal is a 37-ton vehicle. And so 24 tons and 37 tons don't work well together. And so to make that bridge function for fire trucks in the future, it needs to be strengthened, if you will. So Brian asked me to sort of try to put my arms a little bit around what kind of cost it may be for this bridge project. And so if we can limit the scope of work, so it's only work between the sidewalks, if you will, the parts of the bridge that have the load capacity issue, we might be something around $500,000, $600,000 worth of construction effort. If we need to sort of unwrap things and add crash walls because we're near a railroad and strengthen barriers, the price can escalate pretty quick. And so if we were going to take a stab at a unit price and replace the entire bridge with a new one, it'd be something on the order of $2 million for that bridge. And Brian asked about pursuing outside funding, which makes a lot of sense here. So I'll talk a little bit about federal dollars and state bridge bond dollars. Those are administered by some guys in Oakdale and in St. Paul, the State Aid Office. The Minnesota Historical Society has a couple funding sources. The CLG grants and the legacy grants have been used in the past on projects. But one thing to keep in mind is that these funding sources from the outside often have strings attached to them. So if we are going to use a certain pot of money, they may ask us to meet certain standards to use that pot of money. So if we're thinking about using CLG grants or legacy grant monies, they are going to be darn sure that nothing compromises the historic integrity of the bridge, because they don't want to fund something that wrecks their historic resources, which makes good sense. And there are standards for conventional transportation dollars as well. And so there are a number of different sources. I talked to the bridge office a little bit, and I think your bridge is probably eligible for most of these, state or federal dollars, if you will. And so it has a rating that is low enough to make it eligible for federal dollars and state dollars. And there are some other funding sources they can try to put together. But the idea is you put together an application with how much the project is expected to cost, and they'll help assemble a funding scheme for it. They don't always get all the bonding dollars and funds that they're looking for, so there aren't a lot of guarantees there, but we can get you queued up on the list for that. The Historical Society has funded not so much construction dollars. They've funded a number of design contracts, if you will, to help rehabilitate some local historic bridges. So they came forward with a grant for $93,000 to rehabilitate the bridge out in Pipestone. We were part of that team. The West Bridge is in Medelia. We were part of the team that helped rehabilitate that one. And then the other three are Cannon Falls and a couple other spots around the state. So those haven't been used for bricks and mortar, if you will, so much as soft costs for professional services. If we start to take the big state aid pot of money here, here's what they had for bridges for 2018 to 2020. So they had identified project costs of nearly $400 million, and that $31 million would be the local cost participation. So if we sort of smear that around, that's 7.6% is the local participation on average. If we could get the low-end project to work, that would be about $43,000 if that average holds, or up to $146,000 if it's the full $2 million project as sort of a starting point here. So our approach to preliminary engineering is to be as surgical as we can. One of the first things I asked Brian when I met with him earlier was, "Well, if you didn't have a load capacity issue, would you be doing anything to this bridge?" His response was, "No, it's doing just fine up there." And so with that in mind, I think our approach is to really just focus on the area between the sidewalks, see if we can get that strengthened. And as long as we have good load capacity in other parts of the bridge, just focus on that and get out of town as quick as we can for as little money as we can. And so what we need to do is, the bridge was designed in 1938. It's now 2019. So our trucks are bigger, our load demands are bigger than what was originally in there. So we need to make sure those old components that we want to keep have enough capacity to support current loads. Sort of like the Midtown Greenway, we didn't have to strengthen everything. We only needed to strengthen the top. Hopefully, we can do the same here. And so we want to make sure that timber and steel piling in the bottom has good capacity to carry current loads. We'll make sure the piers and abutments, the next step up of the structure, has good load capacity. Let's keep the sidewalk and railing. There's not an issue with that. We'll just replace the slab in between. And so Brian mentioned our proposal, and so we plan to be the prime consultant. Interstate has a local office in town here, and so they would be a good partner for us to understand the community and detour routes and utilities and things like that. So they've agreed to partner with us. And Braun Intertech, we've worked with on several projects in the past. They're really good at geotech. They're really good at telling us if concrete's got issues, and they can do a hazardous materials assessment, which is needed for some funding sources as well. So basically, looking at your bridge, if we can get our game plan to work here, what we'd like to do is replace what's in blue and what's in green and leave the rest of the bridge as it is. And so the reason why we have two colors is you've got a railroad underneath that span with the green section there. And so typically, there's not a lot of extra space for formwork to sit below the deck while that's being constructed, if you will. And so what we think makes sense is to pre-cast some concrete for that green segment, and then cast the blue stuff on site, because that's a little more economical, given the crazy geometry going on here, and just strengthen those sections so they can carry current trucks and fire trucks, and then button your bridge up. And that would be generally our approach. So like I said, there are some strengths with some funding sources. And so if you have a pothole out on your bridge, and you go fix your pothole, no one's going to expect you to update railings and put crash walls in. But if you get to a point where you're replacing more and more of your bridge, people are going to have more and more expectations for what gets fixed. And so the railing up on top is doing just fine as a pedestrian railing, but it can't handle the current loads that would be required. So if there's a funding source that says we need to strengthen that railing, that sort of opens up a little bit of can of worms there. If the piers need to be strengthened, and we need to do some work down by the railroad tracks, current designs would require a crash strut, basically a 400,000-pound hit from a train hitting it. And so if we can get away from things and make it more of a pothole repair project as opposed to a big rehabilitation project, we should be a little more surgical in how we can do it. It'd be nice, possibly, to bring back the old light standards. We've done that on some bridges in the past. You do have some non-commissioned artists putting some graffiti down below. It'd be nice to take care of things like that. I guess that's, in a nutshell, what I have to present, I guess.
So, thank you, Steve. So it is possible to, is it just basically thickening the concrete or is it different materials? Or is it just between the sidewalks?
So what happened here is that, if I go back to this cross-section, and you look at that concrete section, it sort of varies in depth from, you know, thin at the middle to a little deeper over the piers. So they put reinforcement in that to carry a certain-sized truck, if you will. And so what we can do is we can use a higher-strength concrete, and we can pack the steel in more densely, because we really can't encroach on the vertical clearance for the railroad without causing some issues there. We possibly could add a little bit on top and change the profile, but if water's draining across the bridge, that gets a little more complicated. If we're trying to keep the sidewalks, we need to sort of match in to the sidewalks where they are right now as well.
Sure. And then one other question, just as far as the funding and all those different sources. I'm sure it gets complex, those applications. Do you design a project around, do you find out on those funding and then design your project, or do you figure out what your project is and then try to go get the funding?
So what, Brian asked us to have some time in our front end here to basically go meet with the state aid people and talk through what makes the most sense as far as what pot of money you could take advantage of, if you will. We hope to do that with the Historical Society as well, before we get down the road and too vested in a design approach. But we've been pretty successful at things in the past that aren't conventional. This isn't conventional, but it makes a lot of sense here, because I don't think we're compromising the historic integrity of it at all. We're keeping the shape the way it is. We're keeping the materials what they were before. So I think the historic, it should be a win-win situation, I guess, is what we're shooting for.
Sure. Some other questions, Scott?
Just one design detail. The current bridge doesn't have any kind of a railing or barrier between the pedestrian sidewalk and the road. Would the new design require that?
Typically, for a low-speed environment, if we've got a high enough curb, there isn't a requirement to do that. But if the funding source requires the railing to have a certain capacity, that might be one option that makes some sense, is to not mess with that outside railing and just put a lower-profile barrier in there to sort of give people vehicles, keep the vehicles on one side, let it hit that if it has to, and not hit the outside barrier. It does give it a different feel, because it looks a little more trenched, if you will, with those extra barriers. But it can be done.
Justin?
I just have a question. So 37-ton was the fire truck, and I think you said new standards are one and a half times. So is that the heaviest piece of equipment that would go over there? So would it be like 60-ton, then, you would have to have for that bridge for capacity?
So we use what's called notional loads, and then we have sort of real trucks we do, too. So some of the permit vehicles that get examined weigh up to 100, 120 tons. They're really big, but they're really stretched out over a long distance, so they don't impact. The things that are difficult for this type of bridge to carry are sort of your single-frame trucks with four or five axles in the back that are really close together, and then a separate steering axle up front. And so, because all those axles can sit in one of those spans, it's a lot of concentrated load, and that's what makes them work the hardest. Not the super-big ones, but sort of the compact, heavy ones.
Any questions from the council, from staff?
Is our fire truck one of those compact, heavy ones, then, or how does it meet your definition?
So, yes, it is, because the fire trucks were supposed to design for an hour. The FETS came out just a couple of years ago with some emergency vehicle loadings, and it is two 31,000-pound axles relatively close together. And so that's a pretty darn heavy truck, within probably eight feet apart on those axles. And so MINDOT isn't requiring people to post their bridges for emergency vehicles so much, because that load is pretty tough. They're just sort of seeing what kind of impacts it has. But buses are tough, too, you know. They've got tandem axles, not school buses, but city buses are tough, too, at times.
Thanks a lot, chief.
I think this is less than a fire station.
Any other questions, comments, thoughts?
The carrying capacity is the biggest concern, I think, of course. Aesthetically, the sidewalk, just the nosing, the corner edge of the sidewalk is pretty bad. Can something be done?
Yeah. So you can use a small milling machine. We could take an inch or two off the top of the sidewalk and reconstruct that curb face, the vertical edge that the snowplows find every once in a while. That can be reworked, too. The MINDOT report on your bridge talked about putting a clear coating on top of your old railings to keep the water from migrating in and causing deterioration at an accelerated rate. So there are some smaller things, too, that can be done. But yeah, that can be done.
Could you, I know, I think Brian and you guys both touched on the timing. Could you just go over that again briefly, the preliminary planning, the background work and discussions with the Historical Society?
So the idea would be that out of the gates, once we get authorization, we would go approach the two funding agencies, if you will, the Historical Society and State Aid Office of MINDOT, sort of get the funding landscape, and a memo put together with the recommended path forward. Then we plan to have some field work done. One is to get the geotech guys out here to see if they can make the existing steel piling and timber piling have enough load capacity to carry what we need going forward. We also want them to do some concrete testing to make sure it's a good investment to keep using the elements that are out there. So they'll check for chlorides and some freeze-thaw damage, things like that. They'll do a little sampling for lead and hazardous materials. It's like a $2,000 study, but you have to have it done so people handle things properly. And then we would basically, once we sort of have that landscape, we would start from the bottom and work our way up. We'd make sure the piling has enough capacity. If it doesn't, we'll figure out a design with some supplemental elements. We'll check the piers and abutments, make sure they have capacity. If we need to strengthen them, we will. And then basically put the things together for a preliminary bridge plan so that we can get approvals and funds from different people. get approvals and funds from different people.
Brian, do you have anything else?
No, like I mentioned, I have their proposal in front of me, you know? Plan to bring in the next committee as a whole.
Sure.
Look at and everything, but, you know, it's pretty much in line with what we see with between Olson Nezvold's Interstate Engineering and then some Braun Intertek work and everything like you just discussed and everything. So that was the plan on the next committee.
Next committee, we'll kind of discuss the financing.
It'll be another week or so then to present that.
Sure. Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you, Steve, very much.
Thank you. Good luck with your soybeans.